All right, we're gonna get going, so welcome. Good evening, everyone. We have called to order our Eastline Meadows School Committee meeting. It's June 9th, 2014, 7 o'clock. This is a regular scheduled meeting. And with that, we can, oh, I have to remind everyone that the meeting is being both audiotaped and videotaped, and I'm just asking if anyone here is doing the same. Okay, so you know, we're all gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) Pull along the roll call, starting to my left. Beth, would you like to start?
Alvin Smith, Marcy Boucher.
Grammy Thompson.
Rich Ficero.
Deirdre Mayu.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent Schools.
Bill Fatsika.
Dariel Jaris, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Salider and Gordon Secretary.
All right. What I want to start with is the recognition of some students from Birchland Park Middle School. Gordon, would you like to give a little description of what we have tonight?
Sure. We have four students from Birchland Park Middle School who participated in a national bridge competition. They may actually be able to give us more of a description than I can, but basically they're designing a bridge, and the American Society of Civil Engineers sponsors this competition, and then, as far as I understand it, and tell me if I'm correct, it's seeing how much actual pressure and weight those, that bridge can bear. And our individuals tonight did pretty incredibly across the nation in terms of comparisons, their bridges across the nation. So I think we have a few 7th graders and a few 8th graders.
(Inaudible)
Absolutely.
So I have Timothy Kirk, and I don't know everyone by face, so if you do stand up when I say your name, and we'll meet you right over here. I have Timothy Kirk.
Me.
Jake Brady, Nelson Brunet, and Riley Parkinson. And I just want to say, we're over 229 students from 14 local schools were entered, and we have, let's see, Timothy Kirk. He came in 42nd place. Then we have another team of Jake Brady and Nelson, who came in 50th, and then Riley Parkinson was 70th. So we've had some really tough (Applause). And what we have for each of them is a little certificate stating what they've done, and it's a great accomplishment, and I really give you guys a lot of credit for doing it. Is it your first time doing the competition?
Yeah.
Tell them what you guys did last year. They got an award, went to Boston, they were top 10 last year, so.
So you repeat.
Tell them what place were you guys last year.
I was 8th.
All right.
Jennifer Stewart.
I was 9th.
Fantastic.
Wow, that is awesome. Very proud of you guys. All right, do you want to give that one to Timothy?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Jim?
(Inaudible)
Riley, congratulations again, guys. Thank you so much for doing this. (Inaudible) (Inaudible) Thank you.
(Inaudible)
And thank you, parents, for bringing them tonight. It's nice to have them recognized. I just wanted to let them know that you guys, if you want, you can go home, if not, you're more than welcome to stay. I just wanted to leave the offer out there. I don't (Inaudible).
(Inaudible) Thank you.
We don't take offense at it, don't worry.
No. Good night.
High job, always. Great job again. Thank you.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add 7.4 to new business.
I will second that.
What's the business?
It's a request from the J.C.'s for the fireworks display. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, that carries forward, 5 to 0. All right, now we have to move on to the approval of minutes. We have the May 27, 2014, regular session meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the regular session minute meetings of May 27, 2014.
All right, motion made, and seconded. And seconded, any further discussion? Great, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, that carries forward, 5 to 0. All right, we're gonna move on. We have committee and subcommittee communications. Beth, would you like to start us out?
I just want to say that the e-leaf golf event went very well. They made, I think, over $8,000. The sponsors are phenomenal, and the folks at golf had a really great time, so. Thank you.
I'll pass tonight, thank you.
Busy couple weeks, a couple meetings with the collaborative committee, which helped put on that recognition, which was very, was wonderful, and met with the Athletic Subcommittee, Mr. Fonseca and I, and we'll be coming June 23rd with Dr. Flanagan and Mr. Machawa for (Inaudible).
Marhefka.
Marhefka with a presentation on our athletic budget. Also, congratulations to Dr. Flanagan, Ms. Norton, and Ms. Neely for a wonderful graduation. Everybody was happy.
(Laughter) I think that operates.
And the only downer was, I attended the tournament softball game, and they lost in the 13th inning. It was on metal.
I know.
That was painful. So, other than that, it was a wonderful week.
Okay. I just want to also just give mention to, we had music nights at Birchland Park, and again, I'm always so amazed by our chorus, our band, the orchestra. The teachers do such an amazing job, and the way the kids just recognize the teachers at the end, it's really nice to see. And then we also had the elementary school music night, and I really liked that night because it gives us an opportunity as parents who only have kids, like, at one school, you really get to see what's going on in some of the other schools also, and how the kids work separately at the schools, but then come together in the band and chorus to put on a great concert, so. And then Field Day at all the schools is going well.
Yeah.
You know it's the end of the year.
Yes. All right. As Mr. Ficero said, we, Athletic Subcommittee did meet last week. Reminder that we will meet again a week from tonight, a week from today, and we will have the presentation on the 23rd. Collaborative Career and Technical Education, Eastline Meadows Students of the Month, Automotive Technology, Thomas Keek, and Cosmetology, Emily Roy. Congratulations to both of them, and once again, congratulations to all our retirees that were honored at the staff reception last Thursday.
Yeah.
Quite a list, quite an impressive list.
List, yes.
That's what I've got.
Okay, so we're gonna move on, and this is now the part of our meeting where we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee, so if I have anyone here, you're more than welcome to come up and sit at a chair at the table.
Don't I have to sit?
No, you don't have to. I just thought you might like to sit.
(Inaudible)
Oh, actually, you know what?
They'll pick you up on the microphone.
Yeah, Mr. Mackey needs to pick you up on the microphone, so it does help. They're very sensitive, so it's okay if you're not sitting directly in front of it.
So I'm here tonight to speak for paraprofessionals. We have a three-year contract coming up, and it's being voted on, and they're taking away a stipend that we received, and I received as an ASC paraprofessional, and I'm just asking for you then to grandfather it in to people who have already gotten the stipend, to keep the stipend and to not change that. That affects a lot of people's lives, to take $5 away from somebody, and not saying that I work harder than anyone else, and I deserve it more. I did what I was supposed to do, and there was, when we met, there wasn't a few confusions with voting for it. People that weren't there because of deaths in the family, because they were sick, they were told they weren't allowed to vote, there wasn't absentee ballot, and so I'm here speaking for all of them and hoping that we can change this and work harder to think about how it affects somebody's life.
Can I come up to?
Sure. Now, I just want to give a reminder, when we have the opportunity for visitors to address the committee, since this is a meeting and not a public forum, it's really not like a question and answer session, so please feel that you may not get something you want to hear, or we just can't provide you with an answer.
Absolutely.
For your questions tonight.
Yep.
Thank you.
We're just looking to be able to share and speak out for a minute.
Perfect.
I as well am in the ASC program, and am here for the contract as well, hoping to either just even get it on the table again, to just be, the $5 just does affect our lives. A lot of us are mothers, single mothers, trying to put kids through college. We love what we do. We enjoy the kids we work with. They are special to us. Not only does that affect us, but it affects them as well. We feel as if it being taken from us is saying to us, "We don't appreciate your help anymore. You're not, you don't work hard enough." You, these kids, no, they don't need somebody special like you, they don't need, it takes a, everybody can't do that job, and like Heather said, we're not saying we work any harder, but we have had paras come to us and say, "I can't do your job. I would never want to be put in that room." And to have the money that we, I'm sorry, to have the money taken from us that we have went to classes for, we did CPI training, we've earned it, we did what we were asked to do. We based our life purchases on our salary that we were, that we were promised and given, and now it's somebody's saying, "I'm taking more than 25% of your check away from you." It's just kind of a slap in our face of, we feel as if we're, you're saying, "You don't deserve this anymore. Thanks, but no, and you get what you, you get what you paid for, and these kids deserve loving, hardworking paras to be with them." So again, even just not even, you know, the grandfathered in, or at least going to the table again, there, you know, we lost 21 to 26, but not everybody was able to make that meeting due to family deaths, surgeries, and they were told they couldn't vote. And I just feel as if it's a three-year contract, and I feel as if everybody should have been allowed to vote one way or the other, a ballot of some sort, whether it was in the building and everyone got to put to their representative yes or no. I feel like this affects our life for three years, that everyone should have a say, not being told that if you didn't come to the ratification meeting, you don't get to, when it affects our lives and our children's lives that we work with. So, thank you for, I just, thank you for listening.
Yeah, we always appreciate feedback. We, you know, it's good to hear what your thoughts are, and we really appreciate it.
Can I ask a question?
And I was just gonna, I was just gonna present to the board, if there's anyone who would like to say something before I finalize anything, by all means.
So, is the union specifically asking for a chance to vote on ratification again? Because as I understand it, the union met, or the unit met and agreed to the agreement, and so, but are you, as a unit, asking for more time to vote? I mean, is there an opportunity for a re-vote?
I don't believe you're representing the Unit E officers right now, am I correct?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the vote they're talking about was a Unit E vote?
Right.
Around? Right, we had the other, we had, just last week, we had, but there was not, all the paras could not be there due to surgeries, family deaths that happened. We were told if you had called in sick because you were sick, you couldn't come to the meeting and vote. If you had taken a personal day, you couldn't come and vote. But we pay union dues all year. We're still part of the union, and I feel like you should still be able to voice your yes or no on the contract that affects you for three years.
So, did the?
And not everyone got a chance.
Right.
They were told they couldn't come.
Has the union rep, informed the union rep that there's a request to re-discuss the ratification?
Yes, they all, they know that we were coming to, yeah.
Are they open for, the, the union itself, are they open to, because, so the way I look at it is that the unions had this discussion, and the vote didn't go one way or the other, and so perhaps there's a request to have a new vote, but it's, for me, it's within the union to decide whether to vote on it again, so I guess my question is, where is the union in terms of a request to hold off on our vote to re-ratify or not ratify? Is that in process?
The union accepted that it was a vote 21 to 26 that it was gonna pass, but we don't feel like the vote was fair. Not everybody was aware of how you could vote or not vote ahead of time, so that's why we're asking for.
And some have, has some requested to even be on the phone that had surgery, to be able to be there for the vote, to give a vote. Some had a family member that just passed away the night before, couldn't be, and they were told that their vote was not being accepted.
Were they told by the union reps, or?
And we just feel as, we pay union dues all year.
Right.
That's what we pay for, and we should, being the fact that it's our lives and it's our contract, everyone should be able to say a yes or no, not be told they couldn't vote.
Because you're out for. You're seeing 47 of the paras, well, the paras we have, just 47 voted.
Correct.
And some, a few couldn't because of.
Right, family issues, surgeries, yeah.
Others chose out.
Second jobs. Right, yep, second jobs that they had to, you know, attend because they're a single mother or father, correct.
So what are the options for union members to request a new vote? Is there, is that an option? I don't only ask a new vote, I tell them.
Yeah, it'd be some, it'd be some of them would have to go through the union itself.
Union itself, so they'd have to request through the union for a new vote on whether to ratify or not, I guess, and have you done that formally, or not necessarily?
No, no, no.
This is what we were told our next step was.
Right, this, yeah, so that's why we came here.
If I'm understanding, you're only here on that one point of the 28-page Unit E contract, you're only here on this one point.
Yes.
I mean, if we ratify it tonight, they have the option of reopening negotiation to one point, correct? We do that at times.
They could, the union certainly could approach.
They could approach.
And say that they would like to negotiate around, or open up a memorandum of understanding around one point.
Correct. Those are always options.
Those are options.
And when they go to vote, there just have to be a certain number of, a certain percentage of people who have to vote for it to pass, or it is.
It really depends on, it depends on the union and how they set their own bylaws.
Yeah. Plus, by just taking one portion of it, the whole contract is based around more than just that one point. You know what I'm saying?
What would happen? There is more impact. There is an impact.
Right.
Is there a time deadline that we're under to, when's the next, when's the agreement expire? June, July?
June 30.
June 30. So.
And we have a meeting on the 23rd.
So, would it be reasonable to request that perhaps, because I'm just learning how this might go, if you went back to your unit and requested a new vote, because it sounds like that's what you're asking for, if we, as a board, held off until then?
You certainly can table your vote.
And then, it's, I don't know how the procedures within the union, we can't obviously overstep the union and what they do, if they are willing to, able to do that, then you have that vote within the next two weeks, and you come back to us, and I would say, if, if, if for whatever reason, and I don't know what that would be, they say, "We can't re-vote," we will have to act, I would say, and it would be up to this committee to do that, in two weeks, because we need to have a contract in effect, so.
Okay.
I don't know, I would ask that, perhaps we give the, you know, folks that are concerned about this, the next two weeks, to perhaps request a re-vote and have that re-vote.
So we go to them and ask, and if they tell us no, we come back in two weeks?
Well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to act on a contract.
Okay.
The only contract that we have to act on is the one that has been ratified by the Unit E, uh, Unit E, uh, unit.
Okay.
And so we can't vote on anything else, and we can't tell the union what to do, so if the union has a vote taken, and they've ratified, which you've done technically, then that's all we can act on, and correct me if I'm wrong.
And I would request that when you talk with, you know, the, if, you know, we're able to motion to move this to the 23rd, to sit down on top of them and go through it line by line and understand what it is, because there's a lot of little things, and it sounds bad, and I understand where you're coming from, that it's not, and it is, you know, for certain levels, but it's also a sound proposal, and there's, there's other things in there, so just really sit down and try to understand it. Do we need a motion to go back into open session?
No, we're, 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 we just moved.
All right, so I, before we move on, I just want to say, after our fruitful discussion in the other room, I just want to let you know that we feel as a committee, since this is not a formal request from Unit E, we have to honor the process, and it has been voted on through your Unit E, and we feel we're going to leave it under our 7.3 agenda number and vote on it then. Okay? So we do appreciate your input, we appreciate you coming here, voicing us your concerns, but we do feel that it is a Unit E situation, and we have to respect the process that's already been done, and the good faith bargaining that's been done with our team and yours.
Okay, thank you.
Great? Great, thank you.
(Inaudible).
All right, so we're gonna move on to 5.1.1.
Excuse me, can I speak for, are you, are you done? Can the parents speak?
We're, we're done with, I think we should just move on and.
Yeah, we have.
Is it on the same thing?
Yes.
We're done.
Yeah, we're done with that. We've come up with our discussion, we had our executive session on that. Okay? So we have our leadership team here tonight. Parental input's not being sought here? Well, it is, it's really.
No, we were very moved by what they said, and as you saw, we left for a good 15 minutes to discuss it. At this point, you heard our chair, this was fully discussed, all angles were discussed, we have to accept the process that's been put in front of us, that the Unit E leadership has made this decision, the Unit E contract has been ratified by the body, we cannot change that in any way, so we have to stay with the process and validate the process.
I'd also just like to say, I was, you know, on the committee, and I feel that there was, (sigh) there was a lot of feeling that went into this. It was not done lightly on any, any level whatsoever. The children are obviously the utmost there, but we have 96 paras, plus or minus a few, and many different levels that were dealt with, and it wasn't just one issue, it was, it was an entire contract, and we felt that everybody worked as well together as possible, and I wish that there was a better understanding and a better feel about it, but like we said, we did go in, we did discuss it, and, and it is not the one moment that we feel it's in disregard to any student whatsoever, we're trying to help all the students with all the paras across the board, so.
But was the parental input side at any point along the way, is my question?
There does have to be. Do you go into our chat too?
Well, generally in collective bargaining, that's not something where parents enter into a contract discussion.
All right, so we can have our leadership team come up for our presentation, we have our SMART goals.
Mr. Ne, you gonna need to, wait, any idea?
All right, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In your, in your package, you have a copy of the presentation that we're about to show in a PowerPoint. One thing that I would like to say, and certainly the schools who are still in process with STAR testing know this, that our data is fluid and continues to be creative, so what you're gonna see tonight is not only the graphs that you saw in your packet that was delivered to everyone on Thursday morning of last week, but you'll also see updated graphs where we have updated information, such as Meadowbrook has now finished their third for all students, their third STAR assessment, and so now we were able to, rather than confuse people and take out graphs and put new graphs in, we've just added a graph after, say, the elementary intervention, and students add proficiency levels. In no situations where we have new data, we've added a new graph. Does that make sense? And I'll point them out as well. Okay? This is a word, similar to the word that you saw in the mid-cycle, and the key word as you look through all of our different documents and all the work they're doing is develop. It's, it's been a key action word for the district this year, not only around open response questions, but as we used our work with open response questions to move into common assessments, we've been developing over the last two years model units as we align our curriculum and curriculum guides. So that continues to be the word most seen in our documents, which is what made it the largest and most pronounced word in the world. Just quickly, SMART goals, that's basically what we're describing here, so specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, timely, we want to make sure we're always keeping all our students in mind. As we do throughout the year, but certainly when we set our goals, we try to keep in mind, what are we doing with core instruction? How are we using data to see how students are progressing through the year, and do they need some type of intervention? That's the yellow section, and then as we're providing intervention and we're doing progress monitoring, do we have a situation where students might need a different kind of intervention? That's what the pyramid is, and as we go through our goals each year, we're getting better at this. Our data cycles and some of the things you're gonna see in this presentation, we're, our data literacy, if you will, and our capacity as a district to use data has gotten better not only this year, but over the past, really, four years. So that brings the SMART goal one, which basically stated up here, all students will receive standard space instruction aligned with the mass curriculum frameworks that lead to 100% of DLPS students making positive gains in their learning to meet MCAS, District Interim Assessment, and District Common Assessments proficiency levels. You see the 100%, it's one of the things we're always looking at, all students making progress.
I'm not gonna read that to you, that's a lot of long words, and then you'll proceed to have it back it, but these are some of the action steps to help with creating and maintaining standard space instructional system. So a lot of professional development around common assessment development, which is the end of what our curriculum wants to measure. We've had 51 teachers across the year develop curriculum units and then transition into assessment development in a system called EDWIN, and we'll talk a little bit about that in another slide. We then wanted to discuss and create a data review cycle so that teachers can have time to meet around the instructional data that they receive, so that you can have timely instructional plans developed to target what the data is telling you. And then you've heard us talk about learning walks, we go as a team, we're looking for some of our best practices in action, and then a new piece for next year, what we're doing is providing, our ELL numbers are increasing yearly, and so we not only are training teachers, but we've developed some instructional guides for every teacher that will be rolled out next year, that gives them some instructional strategies for students at certain proficiency levels, language proficiency levels. And so the ELL staff will meet with every teacher next year who has ELL students in their classroom, and will go over these instructional guides, and then that will be a tool that the teachers can refer to so that they can pick up on the strategies most effective for language learners at those levels. This, you're gonna, you're about to see a slide that will go over the open response questions, and so we wanted to give you a little bit of how we use open response, what's the purpose, and how it aligns to meeting the standards, and that's what this slide's about. So it is a formative assessment practice, ORQs is open response questions, we put everything into an acronym. It's really a writing-to-text type of assessment or question. It really is one question, students read a particular text, or content-based, or literature-based, and then they answer a question and they respond to it. We want to do this because we want college-ready thinkers and writers, and that that's a skill that is, that is needed. We embed this into instructional practice. It is not something that is just done to collect data, but rather it's part of everyday instruction. You'll notice that this happens a lot, and then you can see a couple of the standards that this supports, that type of process is on the left-hand side with the anchor standards for writing, it's text type and purposes for writing, standard one in the Common Core Assessment, standards rather, and then range of writing, which I don't know if you can see it, but they want us to routinely write over extended timeframes, but also shorter timeframes, and the ORQ helps us with that shorter timeframe writing, where they have a range of writing purposes and audiences. And then on the, the other side of the column, the right-hand side, shows you, here's language out of the Common Core, here's why we want content for student writing, and it breaks it down, you can see the continuum, K to five writers, what they want them to do is to really be able to respond analytically to literary and informational sources, which would be a text, and then your ORQ would be the response to that, and then you could see it gets more sophisticated for six to 12 writers as well, where they have to research, they have to analyze sources and provide evidence. And so that's kind of the background as to why we use open response questions. It's a really good tool to, for really getting students to think and develop and analyze text.
Just to give people context and history, remember, we've been looking at our data, our state data for the last few years, where we've seen that open response, that our, our students' responses to open response prompts has been in the area. that our, our students' responses to open response prompts has been in the area of challenge. And so what we're trying to do is embed this across all subject areas. So this is something students are getting the opportunity to develop and master skills where they're doing this type of writing across all subject areas. So this chart just gives you an idea of the depth and the breadth of the work and that, you know, our teachers, there's an incredible volume of work that they've been producing in terms of coming together, understanding how they not only put together an open response question, but also in the mid-cycle, we talked about how we've developed analytical rubrics to help them grade in a consistent way across not only grade levels, but subject areas and so forth. And so this just gives you an idea of the volume of work that is behind what we're doing this year.
What were those numbers representing?
Those are actually, if you think of all our students, those are open response questions-
Eighteen-person pack, that's what, eight hundred students a person pack?
Six fifty, six fifty.
Times three is what?
That's ten times, they each took tens, or a hundred. Ten, they each took ten.
I thought it was going three times a year. But that represents-
Across all subject-
Yeah, but it's across all-
So you'll say that, you said it was three times a year. So it's across all subject areas?
It's, the open response question is actually the one writing prompt that Valerie was just talking about. As we build the common assessments off of this, then we go to-
I thought, okay, three times, I didn't realize it was across all subject areas.
All subject areas.
Thank you.
So going from open response, which more or less has been the base from which we started our common assessment work, now we're at the point in the year where we actually have common assessments that are ready to be piloted. Valerie can give you an idea of, in the different schools, where we're piloting them and how we're using, if we are, using the Edwin system or we're doing a paper and pencil version of that test.
So K to five is piloting their math common assessments. You can see that they did paper and pencil and they did pilot one online assessment in first grade over at Meadowbrook. The others did paper, pencil. It's a lot of on-demand, one-on-one testing, particularly in kindergarten. So they had a combination. But we had first graders taking the assessment on iPads and it went well. And then what we did is we met afterwards with the teachers, showed them how to enter open response questions into the Edwin system. And then he could see his data right there. And then as far as, it drills it right down to the standard. So he could see how his class did on each standard that they had called out on their assessment, which is completely aligned to the curriculum that they're teaching. And so this just replaced an assessment they would've given them anyway. And a lot of them said, we need to use an assessment for grading purposes anyway. So this aligned nicely with that. Maple Shade and Mountain View are in the midst of either planning for or administering their, their assessments. And they are doing it online using the computers. I was in a third grade class today that was administering and the kids were, were fine with it. They said, it was working out well. Burchland Park did paper, pencil. So it's a bubble sheet and then it gets scanned. We will be meeting with them. They, science has already given it to math, is in the process of giving it, just a couple of classes. You're kind of piloting it out, seeing how it works. And then we'll meet with them to do that analysis piece on, on what their dashboards look like in the Edwin system. And then science is doing the same thing. We have a few science teachers who are also piloting and they are going to split fifty-fifty. They're looking at one class doing online and the other class doing paper, pencil. So we can see what's more efficient.
So this is a pilot and it's gonna extend, so next year we're gonna see more classes evolve in this common assessment?
Yeah, so back to the first, some of the action steps you saw, developing common assessments aligned to our curriculum. This is how they'll be administering those assessments. Next year's really kind of the, the final year to develop these assessments and get them up and running.
Across all grid sectors?
Right.
Yes.
So even art?
Yes, but art does a performance assessment, so, yep.
The common assessments eventually will become our district determined measures. And that's a term that's more of a state term. And that's something that gets wrapped into evaluation eventually. So what we're trying to do is build assessments that not only, it's good practice to develop common assessments so that students are, you know, different classes are seeing the same assessment. We're seeing how they've progressed in their learning. It's consistent. We would like to take that, that's been built within our district with our teachers and move those into our district determined measures.
Will those be DESA approval?
Well, we've submitted not only our pilot plan at the beginning of the year, but we've just submitted what our, where our work has gotten us to at this point and where we're going over the next two to three years.
But that, so it'll all become district determined measures? So that's how we go?
Right.
From common assessment to district?
That's how we're doing it.
Okay.
Going back to some of the action steps that we're talking about, one of the things that the leadership team has done over the last two years is conducted learning walks to take a look at, okay, how is this impacting all this work, all this discussion? How is it impacting core instruction? We also wanted to make sure, as I was at the, at the mid-cycle, that we're expanding leadership and increasing the capacity of our department heads. So we did do a training, voluntary training back in August with our department heads. I believe most, if not all, of our department heads attended that training. We introduced the idea of Google Docs. That's something that was used last year a little bit. And this year it's been used across the district in so many different ways. We talked about it, that training, how the learning walks had gone the prior year and how we'd like to expand so that we're at least bringing the building at which we're visiting those department heads with us on that learning walk. And so we have been able to complete ten this year. Our last few really concentrated on looking at student work samples, which was a nice way to finish off the year. And that may generate some different focus next year as we look to continue this, this process. It may not be a full leadership team walk next year. It may be more at the building level. So that's some of the work and discussions we're gonna have over the summer to see, okay, where do we expand this for next year?
With all the information you gather through observation, what, what is that information called from that point?
With each, yeah, it's a great question. Each learning walk, right now, the structure has been around basically what we're seeing in the classroom, components of the, the common components of the instructional block, how students are being engaged, how students are responding to questions, that type of thing. We capture that all in a Google Doc that we created. I think actually Valerie created. And that then compiles the entire learning walk of everyone who visited. You know, if we go, we may be visiting twenty classrooms-
What's a principal do with that information?
That's, that's where I was getting to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then they, that generates graphs. We discuss it and the principals share out not only the graphs, but also some key points. And this is where I think it became much more of an inclusive atmosphere this year because I think our department heads were very nervous at first joining the learning walks. But when they got to the end of the learning walk and were able to discuss what they saw and how we were then generating the feedback back to an individual school, I think they really enjoyed it. And so at the end of each learning walk, we discuss what we've seen, what the graphs have generated in terms of what we've captured in each classroom. And then what are some key points to get back to staff? And that brings us to SMART goal two. And really SMART goal two, as you can see, is around developing the common assessments. But it's also the fact that as we develop these, whether it's the ORQ, which is really was the starting point that we launched our common assessments, or the full-fledged common assessments, it's building our data capacity as a district. As we start to bring these online, what do we do with that data? How do we use it? How does it help us support students?
So you can see some, some of the action steps we took as, as a district were to provide professional development to staff around what would a common assessment be? How do you develop that? How do you set your priority standards that are gonna be assessed? We then scheduled curriculum release time for key teams of teachers who would then begin the arduous task of creating the assessment. And they did some really great work this year on doing that. And then our department heads lead the review of the curriculum units as well as the assessments with their full team. So our idea was that these smaller groups of curriculum writers do the heavy lifting of the work. A lot of the department heads are part of those curriculum writing teams. And then they message it back out to the full department to keep everybody in the loop.
And before we leave this, as, the next few graphs you're going to see are not so much about looking at, okay, where are our students in terms of achievement? Yes, they show some of that. But it's more around, there are samples of what the buildings are using for these data review meetings. Who's using this specific graph that may come up as you look at the different samples? You'll see, okay, maybe that's department heads and principals. And then it gets down to grade-level teachers. And then it may get down to the individual teacher himself or herself. That, that next few graphs are just gonna give you a sample of that and how we're building our data capacity. So this one is an elementary graph. And basically it's looking at the math ORQ or common assessment. And it's looking at the rubric elements. So it's giving in the three grade levels, three, four, five. So this is looking at a building level. And it gives a principal an opportunity to see, okay, how are we doing in terms of hitting and mastering elements on our analytical rubric?
Why, this-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, please, I mean, I just, are those good scores? I mean, there's no, on the left there it says-
You're exceptional.
Exceptional, I don't care, I don't know that though.
Four-point scale. Just like MCAS.
This is three points five.
So four-point scale, four-point zero eight?
Four points, the rubric, just like MCAS, you know, open response.
Okay, thank you.
So this, this is just a sample of what an elementary principal might look at first because it gives, all right, how are the different grade levels doing against the rubric elements? Okay, does that make sense?
Are those test scores from our case or just, just like an idea?
No, no, these are, these are from our-
Third grade's a two-point scale.
Oh, okay.
The third grade's a two-point scale. Thank you.
All right, so then this takes you more to a teacher-level analysis. So this would be where a teacher could start to look at his or her class. And on the bottom here, you see the actual rubric items. We, you couldn't really see it in your packet?
We just said a strand.
Yeah, so we actually named, named the rubric element. The strand is the rubric element. So I think it says strand one?
Correct.
All right, that'd be focus, evidence, explanation, and organization. So this is what a teacher might start to look at, okay, in these different areas, skill sets, if you will, how are, how are my students doing?
This three, this is grade three, four, and five?
No, this is actually, comes from, I believe, the middle school.
So, it looks good, but I mean, we don't understand the rubrics without the rest of the rubric, right?
Right.
This is, this is not-
That's why we're having trouble with this.
Right, and I understand that.
It's like a bunch of colors with a bunch of numbers, without the rubric, I guess.
Right.
Not minimizing, I'm not trying to minimize it, I'm just saying-
Stick to the rubric, we certainly can.
That's why we're having trouble, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a three-part rubric. Those are the three components, focus, evidence, and explanation, and organization. And then for every writing, ORQ. And a writing ORQ is basically any non-math and science. So my family and consumer science teacher used this rubric. Social studies, ELA, my Spanish teachers gave ORQs and used this rubric, the one that you're seeing, the three components were at the bottom. So then on each component, students get a zero, one, two, three, or four on that component, really a one, two, three, or four on that component. And then they get an overall out of twelve for their final score. So, I mean, what you're seeing is typical, the things, you know, we saw growth from the first one to the last one. And certainly, I don't know if Dr. Flanagan would echo this, but I mean, the, the big thing for my school was at, once we had an analytical rubric, where we didn't just look at it from up here, we looked at different components. I mean, ninety-nine out of a hundred times, my teacher said, we gotta get better with evidence and explanation, which is exactly what the ORQs go towards, is taking evidence from the text and using it to prove your point, which is really one of the most important skills of Common Core and most important skills for college, too. So, so what you're seeing is pretty typical. We saw a lot of growth. My, I've been meeting with teachers the last two weeks about their summatives and they've all been showing me this kind of growth. But it's also typical in that evidence, explanation is where we have the most room yet to grow. And that's where a lot of our reteaching focus has been.
So Dr. Allen, that was, this is one teacher's class right here?
So that's like an overview of that teacher's class?
How that, how that class is doing.
Did they get the individual student, apply the rubric to the individual student as well? And teacher guys the same?
Next slide, I'll show you that.
The teacher puts in each student's. And then Eric, Mr. Bauer, creates this for us. So we, we can see a more global scale. And then he'll also, you know, we, we use, once they put in the individual students, we, we can say, give me my seven lowest kids on evidence and explanation so I can really work with them off to the side. You know, you can use it a lot of ways.
That's the next slide?
Right, what we're trying to show you is an idea of the different types of graphs we're using as we have these data meetings. Okay, so this is a teacher's class score over three different assessments or ORQs.
See, once you explain, it's easy to grasp. I think next time, maybe, we may need some narrative up there, just basic explaining what that graph represents.
Okay.
But yeah, but yeah, once you explain, it's, it's very easy to grasp.
So the next one now, this is actually, yeah, yeah, it's by student for an individual teacher. So this teacher would be able to look at how-
One individual strand also, I'm gonna assume.
No, this is actually over two different ORQs. You see up top there it says test one, test two. So it's each student, each one of these combination of lines or double lines is one of the students in that class. And they-
Right.
So this teacher can break down how his or her students are doing on the different common assessments.
So this is one student?
No, this is one class.
Oh, no, so this would represent one student?
Yeah, this is one student, this is another student in that class.
But this isn't on strands, this is on-
How they've done on that ORQ.
ORQ.
ORQ one, blue, ORQ two, red.
Yeah, if I, if I look at this now, if I'm the teacher, I'm gonna feel pretty gratified. Am I correct? Because a lot is better than second test, am I correct?
Yeah.
I mean, except for the one over here. That one really-
But that's, that's, that's the point, is that you wanna see, okay, how are our students doing? And where are some of our students having challenges? And now you can bring some support.
Most of those students drop to the second test, which is great.
And there's one there that's, that stayed the same.
Yeah.
So what is that trigger? Intervention? Or am I getting ahead, is that a fair question?
Well, this is a Meadowbrook graph.
This is Meadowbrook? How do you know, how do you tell that?
Um, because it's-
Once you get, we did an adverb, this is Meadowbrook.
No, because on our little secret note.
What we're trying to do is show you how we use the data, not necessarily isolate one school or another. However, Meadowbrook might be able to speak to Holly being this-
So this teacher should feel good, correct?
Yeah, and you know, it's about using data to plan your next steps of instruction. So Holly and I met individually with teachers out here. They completed the open response. And, you know, we just looked at student work and looked at next steps and looked at the areas on the rubric where they needed to work next. And so that's, you know, hopefully where we're seeing that, that improvement, you know?
So what, and just in terms of data and how we talk about the tiered instruction and such, those that have reached the highest point of the rubric, we're still focusing on in some sort because we know they're, they've mastered or whatever you wanna call it, the rubric, but-
Yeah, and what happens with an analytical rubric is, is in all honesty, it's very few that reached the high point in all three categories. So that's what, on the, on the MCAS rubric, yeah, our top kids just keep getting fours, you're doing great, see you later. But the analytical rubric still gives you an area where you can sort of focus and push them forward.
And there's always ways to improve on the detail and to improve on their voice and to improve on, so.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
And also if it's text-based, you can change the text. You can get more sophisticated text, which then requires you to analyze and respond differently. Which these are, they read a text and then they're responding from the text and they're providing evidence from the text to, to respond to the question.
Okay.
And this is just further breaking it down. This would be one student. So teacher could actually get, we can start to develop this so that teachers can see more information on particular students. You were talking about some of the students in the previous graph where, okay, what do we, how do we help that student? This would be the start of that, where you start to break down, okay- This would be the start of that, where you start to break down, okay, how did this student do on the two ELA common assessments? How did the student do on the two, the three math common assessments? And so they can see this at that specificity.
Now, do the students have that rubric with them when they're doing this, or it's just something that they thought, oh, okay, so they don't get it till afterwards, or do they see it?
Well, the teachers at the high school, the teachers utilize it with their daily practices, so they did get an orientation on it, and it's emphasized all the time, not just on the assessment, but in their daily writing.
In all class subjects.
The idea is the further we can entrench this into what we do on a daily basis, then it's not anxiety-producing moment for students to answer and write in this type of way.
Just what Clarity said, it's my understanding that the reason we don't have a third test for ELAs is that that's happening as we speak.
No, not necessarily. This may have been elementary, in which case we didn't do a third assessment, grades three through five, because of the timing of it and other things that were going on. It seemed like it wasn't, basically the question was, at this time, if you gave the third assessment, is it going to give you useful information, and are you going to, and are you going to be able to utilize that? And if the answer was no, then I said, then don't, you don't have to do it.
Makes sense.
Just to do it. So we stacked up a little bit.
Okay, so just moving forward with this goal, all right, you can see the district-level work, as exemplified by these graphs, has improved our data capacity. We're using these type of graphs, and actually, the schools are pushing Mr. Bauer to produce even different, more creative graphs. And so that's, we're getting into a culture where people's data literacy, if you will, has really increased, and they're seeking different things through their principal, through their academic coach, and then through Mr. Bauer, as they contact him for various things for their next data review. So the principals and the instructional coaches can use the data in this organized instructional review to help make instructional decisions every year, and help teachers make instructional decisions that are going to make sense, the most sense for those students. We talked a little bit about Edwin Teaching and Learning, it's more in the, sort of where we are with the action steps, and this is something that, as we move further into it next year, should really help us facilitate not only data entry, but then the analysis. Those pilots that you saw, if we can get them into Edwin, that's going to help us break out reports even faster, and help teachers with getting at the data in a very quick, structured way. Teachers and principals will be able to focus attention on how effective a curriculum is on particular standards. So that's what the data continues to help us do. As we go from here, now we're getting into some of the charts that you've seen before, and this is the STAR assessment that we've been using for the last few years. And last year, we started to show you in terms of how our students were doing in terms of, as they went through the year, how many students were needing intervention. Okay, and actually, this is the, one of the first graphs I was talking about. We have more data, more up-to-date data, so there's a graph behind this, if you want to go to it, that we added today, which gives you, for second grade, Meadowbrook now has finished their STAR assessment, so we're able to bring that into it. So this is looking at students in grades two, three, four, and five throughout the year, first STAR assessment, second STAR assessment, third STAR assessment, who are in need of, these are percentages, not numbers, in need of intervention, need of some type of support, if we think back to that triangle at the beginning. So it gives you an idea of, for the most part, that we're seeing our students who need intervention throughout the year drastically reduced in number. I don't know if you want to speak to, anybody wants to speak to on the elementary level in terms of some of the supports that we're doing, interventions?
Probably more so with the reading.
More so with the reading? Okay, okay. And then this is now our reading graph, anything, is this the second one? Oh, okay. And so with updated information that we talked about, this is now students in these same grade levels who, at the beginning of the year, how did they, what was our percentage of students needing intervention in reading? And as we gave the STAR in the winter, and then the STAR assessment in the spring, you're seeing, for many grade levels, you're seeing a reduction, pretty considerable reduction. And similar to, you're going to hear this phrase quite a lot, that as we, because the data has been fluid, and to Mr. Fertaro's point, we may want to look to do this presentation later in June. It wasn't something that, unfortunately, we could schedule this year, but because the data's fluid, as we gave your packets out on Thursday morning, we had students who were completing STAR Thursday, Friday, and I think even some today. So we were able to pull more data for you and give you more up-to-date graphs. I think this is actually the one, in terms of math intervention at the middle level, six, seven, and eight, you can see how students did in terms of the fall, the winter, and the spring. And then looking at the reading intervention for the middle level, I don't think there's a change here. I think this graph is the one that you actually have in your packet, and no new data came in. So you see how students for reading, the ELA STAR, in terms of needing intervention.
So I can speak to that a little bit, if you think like.
Please stop, Bill.
So for the math intervention, we really, which was the slide before, we do want to really increase and target our math intervention. So I'm sure you've all heard about schedule changes at the middle school, and we're going from one math intervention teacher to two math intervention teachers. We've been using a program called Alex the second half of this year, which is a web-based learning program. And the students that are on Alex are, their growth is tripling that of our students that aren't. So we've already secured that for next year, and we've ordered the hardware necessary to really up the ante. So we're going to have a nice, two teachers teaching math intervention that are going to do half the class in small groups and half the class on Alex. Alex is an incredible program, I just ordered it for my own daughter for the summer. And then, so that is what's coming there, plus 10 minutes more math every day for every student, which is 1,800 more minutes on math over a school year. So then on reading, we have two types of reading intervention in the school this year. Tier two is a reading class, which needs three days a week, and tier three is a more targeted reading intervention using web-based learning as well. And halfway through the year, we looked, and our tier three reading students, again, were like pretty, like doubling, tripling the growth of the ones in our tier two classes. So now we're going to have two reading interventionists that deliver reading intervention using our, our tier three model is becoming our tier two model. So they'll be using Read Live, Lexia, and different online programs guided by a teacher, as well as small group guided reading, much like elementary schools do, we're borrowing that from them. So, you know, some of this shows that the trend we want to have, but certainly at the middle school, we want to have more of it. And between longer classes, more math intervention that's targeted, and a greater focus on the reading interventions being differentiated, hopefully we'll see that continue to be the bigger trend than it already is.
Now, these graphs start to look at our students at or above the proficiency level. So this would be the other, the spectrum. This graph actually has been updated, so this is what you had, and didn't change drastically, but basically it gives you, at the elementary level, an idea of where our students were in terms of being at or above the proficiency line on the STAR assessment, grade two, three, four, and five.
So as I look at this, am I correct in being impressed that at least 80% of our students are proficient or advanced in grade two or, is that correct?
Yes.
That's impressive.
Bubbly, it's slightly bubbly.
Why, it's eighty-one, eighty-four.
It's supposed to be eighty-three.
I mean, the grade fours at 92%.
And I believe most of our goals, SMART goals, had something in the eighties, if not 80%, you know, moving 80% of our students to that proficiency level. We want to see all our students improve, but we were hoping we're above it, hoping that we can see 80% or higher at or above proficiency level, not STAR.
Well, we're excited because last year, end of the year, for second grade and math and reading were kind of similar, it was either 67 or 70% end of the year, so we, you know, definitely surpassed that.
That's in math, right? That was...
Yeah, that was math.
Okay, so now, this also, this chart with more information as students continue to take STAR between the packets going out and today, this gives you an idea now of reading, okay, and where we are as you go across the grade spans in the elementary, elementary level, two, three, four, and five.
Still impressive, it was 78%.
And then this is the middle level, but I think we also had more information that we were able to update it. So this gives you an idea at the middle level, students in math at or above proficiency across six, grade six, seven, and eight.
I mean, is it fair to say that, that all this work, what you're showing in the STAR assessment, will hopefully translate into the MCAS score? Is that a fair statement?
It is a fair statement. There's supposed to be a, and Eric may be able to speak to this, there's supposed to be a high correlation between how they're doing in the STAR, ELA, and math, and how they would do on the MCAS that they just, actually, most of them just had in the spring.
Because for Burchton Park, that would be quite a...
Right, right. Okay. Eric, if you have anything to add in terms of that correlation?
Well, I mean, certainly you can't expect it to be one-to-one.
Right, right.
They're both math tests, they're both roughly similar. I have done some work with the coaches at Burchton Park, as fate would have it, I haven't looked at the whole district, but there's, the coaches, Heather, Sheila, and I, there's reason to believe that for reading, the STAR test may be a little harder than the MCAS test, meaning maybe with STAR, we're identifying students for intervention that end up passing MCAS. This is very preliminary, mind you. And the correlation certainly is still very positive and very strong, like Mr. Smith said, but there are some differences. In math, it appears as though it might be the opposite. It appears as though STAR is not identifying students for intervention who end up not passing their MCAS. So STAR might be a little easier than MCAS, and this sort of fits with what we know about MCAS. MCAS is, has a reputation of being hard math, it's a well-regarded state test, and so that's the kind of thing that we see. Yeah, as you point out, if 90% of Burchton Park passes their math MCAS, that would be huge.
We'll say that's proficient.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah, yeah. I tell you, you said it, time will tell.
Thank you.
But it is impressive. I mean, just the progress, it is impressive, so.
So I just want to reiterate, because we had some confusion on this side of the table, that there were slides that were, that needed to be replaced, and so the ones without the emblem, without the seal, are the new data. So this is old data.
Right.
It's based with this. And so anywhere there's a slide that follows without an emblem is the updated.
I was going to say that at the front of the presentation, but I didn't, thank you for catching that.
Okay.
So, actually, this slide has been updated, and so if we go to the next one...
No, this is...
The reading results? No change, I'm sorry. Okay, so this basically is now, you saw math previously, and so this is now six, seven, eight at or above proficiency level for the middle school.
And so our grade six does not, this year did not have a reading intervention class. Students were scheduled for half a year of reading, a general reading class, and half a year of Spanish, whereas next year, that will not be the model, they will be scheduled based on need for reading intervention class, which will hopefully reverse that trend there.
Yeah.
So that brings us to SMART Goal Three, and this was a goal that not only was a district goal, but it also became a building goal, deals with making sure that we're always focusing on fostering a safe, nurturing, respectful, learning, working environment, resulting in an increase in stakeholder, stakeholders being the staff, the parents, and students satisfaction. If you go to the next slide. Some of the action steps that we had at the beginning of the year, and you heard about this at the mid-cycle, we took a look at our exit surveys from last year. This was work we did last summer, actually, right around this time, end of June, and then buildings started to set up building-specific steps that they were going to take around some of the information that they learned from their student exit surveys, and that was happening throughout the year in the buildings. We also, this year, wanted to develop a parent and family climate survey, and that went out just about, now about a month ago, and you'll see the results, some of the results in the next few slides, that was completed. We're going to actually dig through that a little bit more specifically as we begin our end-of-the-year meetings in late June. One of the things that the buildings, all buildings have been doing is, we had a goal to increase our parent workshops, and we've had a number of them at all levels this year. I think the most recent one was on technology at the elementary level, in terms of how we're using technology, but also how it's being used in the classroom. But I mean, this started at the beginning of the year, where in one of the buildings, I think even at Open House, at one of the Open House presentations, I think it was Mr. Ferret, who presented some watch fours, if you will, on social media for elementary parents. I don't know if you want to speak to some of the different parent meetings, because they've gone on throughout the year at all levels.
Meadowbrook hosted one that all the counselors at the elementary level put together on anxiety and...
Solving the worry puzzle.
Yes, so, and it was well-attended.
Deirdre, you came to the one that we had on the...
Common Core?
Yeah, demystifying the Common Core.
We had workshop for parents on how to help your children with math homework. That was a really good one. So then finally, one of the action steps that was happening now is, we're again conducting our student exit surveys at the grade level that is transitioning to the new school. So those students have been, and I think actually Meadowbrook might be doing more, they may be getting input from all their families. But the idea last year, and we're continuing with it this year, was as students reach that grade level where they've been in a school for a while, and now are transitioning to the next school, what's their, what's their thought about their experience in that particular school? And then we use that information to set some goals for the following school year. So the Parent Guardian Survey actually was, if you remember, one two years ago, which got interrupted by the October storm, this one was a much more incredible success. I think we were in the 30 respondent range two years ago. This one, we had 582 respondents, from ELHS parents and Meadowbrook parents with 137, 138 respectively. And we did, this is where we're going to have to do some digging in, we had 184 written comments provided, and they, some of those were not just comments, they were full paragraphs. So we'll take a look at those and start to break those down. We're not going to flash things like that on screen, because those often become very specific, and in some cases, name names, and so those are comments that we will certainly take a look at and discuss. Just some of the key highlights, you had 95.34% of the respondents agreeing or strongly agreeing that their children felt safe at school. You had 83.92% agreeing or strongly agreeing that the communication with their teacher is timely and effective. You had 80.9% agreeing or strongly agreeing that the communication with the school administration is timely and effective. So these are, these are pretty good percentages, and we're happy to see this.
And I just want to comment on, too, that I took the survey, it was very easy, you know, the email provided the link, and easy questions, very quick to do, so if anyone who didn't respond was reluctant because they thought it was time-consuming, it was... It wasn't. It wasn't.
But one of the things you can track, and thank you for saying that, in Survey Monkey is when the spike in terms of responses are happening, and so the Connect Ed would go out, which had not only the phone call, but also the... out, which had not only the phone call, but also the email, and then the next day you saw a spike, just an incredible proportion. Just some other key highlights, you had ninety, almost ninety-one percent of respondents agreeing or strongly agreeing that communication with central office is timely and effective, ninety-one point two, four percent agreeing or strongly agreeing that school staff is courteous and professional, eighty-eight point, almost point seven percent there agreeing or strongly agreeing that they feel welcome at their child's school, and that, these are some of the things that we really want to look at. I mean, that's the base of having a climate that's nurturing and respectful and allowing all stakeholders to take part in. Eighty-eight point nine, one percent agreed or strongly agreed that the child has an adult, and this was another key question that we felt last year needed to be on all these surveys, to whom they feel comfortable going when they have a problem. I'd actually like to see that get to a hundred percent, that's one, all our students to have a go-to person.
Now, have you also looked at each school individually too?
You can break this out, yeah, these are aggregate, but you can break this out, and that's some of the work we'll have to do, so that you saw at the beginning, that first slide, there are a hundred and thirty-seven parents that responded, they were high school parents.
Right.
So we can actually filter it, so we can get those responses and see, okay, what's it look like in terms of the school? But we'll also ask that same question on the student exit surveys, and so we'll hear from the students, and these are parents responding, and so what we want to see is, okay, how do students feel in terms of their experience at a particular school, and did they have a go-to person? Same question gets asked. One of the things we brought to you in the mid-cycle was that we're trying to use our webpage in a way that is useful for the larger community, our school community and the larger community, and so we started to break down, how are people actually using our webpage? And even though this is Google Analytics, so it's tracking, obviously, only if you are using Google Chrome as your browser, but just gives you an idea, at least we had one thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven unique IP addresses accessing the district webpage, approximately five hundred sessions per week. Not a long time on our webpage, fifty-nine seconds, but they, maybe they get what they're looking for and they move on. One of the things we did, just to see how Google Analytics was going to help us, was we made a link to another page for the budget information. Am I saying that correctly, Eric?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that we could actually track, all right, how many people actually took advantage of the budget information that was put out there before the budget hearing and then before town meeting?
I did.
So you're one of the eighty-three.
I was the only one.
So this is a Mr. Bauer creation.
Yeah, Mr. Bauer, when we were talking to him about, or when I was talking to him, how do we use the webpage more effectively? And so we reorganized some things, we reorganized where links are, we'll continue to do that. As he was looking at it, he found that Google gives you some analytics, so you can capture some of this information and hopefully use it to your advantage. Okay, so that, there's some questions on that, moving to SMART Goal Four. This was around making sure that as we plan and as we structure action steps, that we're attaching in a fiscally responsible way the money to make those things happen. And so some of the things we talked about in mid-cycle are still up here in terms of the action steps, a lot of we've completed in terms of not only how we do the budget, but how we change some of the report forms and how we gained information using Google Docs, our discussions with appropriations, then meeting as a full committee with appropriations, and then finalizing May nineteenth our budget. Those are some of the steps that you know about and you participated in. We'll go to the next step. But just giving you a quick update on this, since that, since the mid-cycle, we provided the two thousand fifteen budget information on the district webpage, we saw the eighty-three unique views on that, we presented at the town budget hearing, and in that presentation we explained exactly how we were going to stay within the one percent parameter, we also taped an informational session on LCAT explaining the same thing, and then finally we were able to get that budget approved at town meeting on May nineteenth. So just to give you a quick summary or closure to this whole presentation, we're seeing that students have shown gains in all grade levels. The fact that we're making good progress on our SMART Goals probably comes from the fact that we do a lot of work in the summer, and then as our teachers return in late August to align what's the district doing, what's the building doing, and how does that impact individual teachers as they set goals. We're making good progress on our common assessments, and that's, you should remember that slide under Goal One, that's been a ton of work throughout the year, and the teachers and the administrators are feeling it at this point in the year. It's a lot of work to make the progress we've made, but the work is providing us a pretty valuable double check in terms of if we're developing these common assessments and we're having discussions around, okay, what are our priority standards, how are we, how are we going to put this common assessment together, it then makes sure that, okay, are we aligned to the Common Core state standards? Are our lessons that are leading up to the common assessment showing this alignment, and are we supporting students where they need to be supported? Technology such as Google Docs, Atlas Edwin continues to help us collaborate and do this work. Google Docs probably has been the biggest one this year that's used district-wide, but Atlas you've heard about over the last couple of years, and that's where we were mapping our curriculum and starting to put our curriculum guides and then our model units. Edwin this year came onto the scene, and that's where hopefully we'll be able to really utilize and house our common assessments, and eventually we'll be able to phase out Technology at the instructional, or excuse me, classroom level in our instructional practices is taking off. We have teachers using different software packages such as Moodle, Edmodo, Headline you've heard about, you probably as parents, if you have students at the high school or the middle school, might have your own account. The flipped classroom, that's not a technology or software in and of itself, but if you're going to do that, you're using any number of technology avenues to make that happen, where you might film something that you are going into the next day, but the homework is for the students to watch that video that you attach to your webpage, so they're gaining the information, something that you may have done in the classroom in previous years, you're now having them do at home, and that moves you right into an activity as you start the class. That brings us to questions and comments.
I just have one, if, if, I don't even have to, I'll ask for Dr. Flanagan, if someone watching at home, all the statistics with K through A, I fear to say, Dr. Flanagan, that most of the assessments from the high school come over the summer, AP, MCAS, SAT, so all pretty much summertime.
Standardized tests, yes.
Pretty much, so, okay. So someone should understand that we don't have those type of statistics at this point for this presentation.
Right, but we also, we do give the comment of the open responses at the high school. We also give STAR, but we don't utilize it in the same way that the elementary and the middle school utilize it, so we do have data, and we use the STARS particularly for interventions as well, so even though those are our biggies and they usually get the results later, we still utilize data.
Okay. And actually, if you think back to the ORQ graphs...
Right.
Those go across grade levels.
Right.
That, that would be the type of data, the high school, the middle school, and all the elementary schools.
Thank you.
We appreciate everyone coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. All right, thank you for managing that. STAR and MCAS, and so he really, he'll get into those discussions with, you know, principals or, as he was saying, instructional coaches.
Yeah.
I found with the questionnaires, that I had these computers for each school, so I didn't have them on the same computer.
Okay. What, now, if, the, the very first Connect Ed, when that went out, unfortunately, it was that way. So it would recognize the IP address and it would knock you off. Once we got a few calls, we changed that, and so, yeah, so people...
Okay, because I was like this.
You can do a survey multiple times.
You can do it multiple times, right.
I just, yeah, we have hundred computers.
Yeah. All right, so we can move on to our five point one point two, which is the superintendent's summative self-evaluation.
Okay. In your package, you have a form that looks like this, without the highlights. It's also in Dropbox, and it's very similar to the mid-cycle. So I can certainly read the entire thing to you, but I did highlight just a few...
No, you don't have to read the whole thing.
Okay. Basically, you're looking at the first part, the student learning goal, and a big part of that is around our work, first with open response questions, and then that has become the base for our larger common assessments. That's, that's the work we've been doing, and what we're looking to see is that that work is going to move students, first allow them to develop skills so that their scores and their individual progress continues as they not only are taking our common assessments, but as they hit things like MCAS and STAR for that matter, although STAR doesn't have a written portion to it. So, one thing that I believe I added since the self-assessment is basically what I just said, the focus for K to five has been really around ELA and math, and then the focus for our ORQs in subjects, has been in all subjects for grades six through twelve. And similar to what I said in the presentation, this does give us a double check, if you will, in terms of how we're doing with alignment of our curriculum. And we're in a good position. We're, we're feeling that where we are, which we just reported to the Department of Education, is in a pretty good spot. We did ask for an extension in terms of how we continue to develop, I think someone brought up art, I don't know if it was Mr. Fredette.
Example, yeah.
Okay, as an example, as we look to develop common assessments, I mean, we have to develop common assessments for our nurses, for our other support personnel, and so we have a plan for that, but it's, it takes time. Moving down then, there's a couple areas to bring out. We did talk about, and it's something that I put in here, that we continue to try to expand leadership across the district, and so that this year was including our department heads on our learning walks, but also starting the year with providing some professional development for them. Some of the things that have taken off is that in specific buildings, you're seeing now less formal, but you're seeing learning walks by staff members, and that's pretty incredible. And you may also see an individual staff member go for an entire period and watch a colleague, and those were things that weren't necessarily happening just a few years ago. Two other highlights since the mid-cycle is that we did have, there was interest from the West Springfield Superintendent and the East Hampton Superintendent, Russell Johnston and Nancy Follinsby respectively, in, one, how do we set up leadership team meetings, and then also, more specifically, how do we use these learning walks? And so they were invited to come with us, not only, first, we actually had combined the two, we had a leadership meeting, leadership team meeting before the learning walk, and then we went on the learning walk. Dr. Johnston may not be using that information, because he just recently got named, become a deputy commissioner for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but anyway, nonetheless, now someone who's at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education knows what East Long Meadow is doing and thinks pretty highly of it. We also used leverage leadership, and this might be something we carry over into next year, because we were much stronger with this book study in the beginning of the year, and then unfortunately, we did get bogged down, so that we didn't get through the entire book, but some of the things we did around feedback and some of the action plans, which we reported out back in the mid-cycle, were pretty impressive, and so that might be something that we continue. Going further into the self-assessment, we also, one of the things that I highlighted under instructional leadership was that this is really something that I want to commend Mrs. Anier for, with the work, we had a number of coordinated program reviews, one of them was on Title One, and we had not only a pretty spectacular result in that, that last meeting, we brought the letter back that indicated we have no follow-up from that coordinated program review for Title One, so that's pretty impressive in and of itself, and Mrs. Anier actually coordinated that whole review. But the auditor from Title One, who was coming out to visit us, also wanted to see what we were doing with learning walks and participated on a learning walk with us, and so that, that's pretty impressive.
Can you trademark that now?
I think that's pretty unique.
It is.
So just going through, as you get into the document, the different standards, so that would be one highlight under instructional leadership, as you go through management and operations, really, one of the biggest things that I would bring out for this year, and it was a pretty taxing year for all of us, and especially the leadership team as well, because if we were meeting, usually there'd been a leadership team meeting or two to help prepare for that meeting. In terms of how we were flexible with developing the budget and ultimately working with the town to get a budget that helps us at least continue to support many of the initiatives that we're doing, unfortunately, it's not where we had hoped to be in terms of a needs, a true needs budget, but it shows certainly that we have an understanding and a flexibility to adjust to the needs of the town. As you flip through, one of the things that would be probably new under family and community engagement, it's more around community engagement, and it's sort of connected to what I was just talking about, is that at the town department heads, we continue to work very closely to partner where we can, depending on what challenges the town may be facing, if there's a way to partner with different departments, we look to do that. And there's, there's really some valuable discussion that goes on at town department head meetings around just problem solving, some of the things that are going on and are challenges for the town of East Long Meadow. And then finally, just, I'm just pulling certain highlights that would be probably new from the mid-cycle. Professional culture, one of the things that you'll see in Dropbox is an agenda from this district-determined measure work group that we're now involved in, and this is a group of roughly ten people that is looking at, okay, all the work we've been doing with common assessments, and now really grappling with two things. One, how do we define growth for the East Long Meadow public schools? And then two, how do we take all this work and put it into some understandable language that can then explain to all of our educators who are part of the evaluation system, how that's going to be used in the evaluation system? And so you'll see in Dropbox, a couple, at least one agenda, I can add more, but I wanted to at least have one sample up there of the type of discussions that are going on at these meetings. But it's, I think it, again, is unique from what many districts around the Commonwealth are doing in terms of reacting to what becomes basically a compliance effort in terms of making sure you're doing that next step of the educator evaluation. We have to do that, but what we're trying to do with this group is to make sure that we're doing it in a way that makes sense, honors a lot of the work, like all of the work really, that we've done this year and the year before, and how can we capture that and define student growth in a way that makes sense for all of us? And so that's just a highlight in terms of the professional culture, it's pretty impressive, and I don't think... It's, it's pretty impressive, and I don't think you have this in districts across the Commonwealth, where you can put basically your management with members of your labor force, so to speak, and have really open and candid discussions. And in the last meeting that we had, we actually had people volunteer to have their individual data. So, the graphs you were seeing where we block out the names, thrown up there on the screen for all 10 to look at and see, okay, now, if we're moving this towards some type of growth measure, what would it be, using this year's, this year's information? And that's pretty impressive, to have people comfortable to do that in that type of group is pretty impressive. So, we're, we're very lucky to be in a district that is so progressive in their thinking. People have questions on?
Well, if you could just tell us in Dropbox where to look for?
Sure. If you look in Dropbox, there is a folder that says summative evaluation, okay? And as you open that, you'll see the four standards. So you'll have evidence under the four standards, but you will also have the educator plan, which has been in there pretty much since the beginning of the year. Then you will have a document, Mr. Fertiero, you were asking about this earlier, but I will print one out for you. There'll be a blank document like this, so each of you then can fill out, from your perspective and reviewing the different pieces of evidence, how you see me hitting the evaluation under each area. And from that, I think they would send them to you as the chairperson, and then you would compile them.
Right.
And we'll come to you by this Friday.
Correct.
This Friday, okay.
Or email over the weekend is fine, too. And then we'll meet on the 23rd, when I will have the final evaluation.
Hey.
Hey.
Sounds great.
As we've done in the past, if people have questions on anything, you're always free to not only meet with me, and I'll answer them in person if you want to call me on something. Would everybody like a paper printed out, a paper copy of this, or do you want to print it out for?
I'd find you one all the time.
I'd like one.
Yeah, I knew. I was going to print you one. Okay.
Okay. Then thank you very much for that.
Sure, thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for cooperating with my timeframe. And we're going to move on to agenda item 5.2.1, which is donation from Horace Mann to Maple Shade Robotics Program.
Okay, in your packet, and Mrs. Ola Jars probably can fill you in with more information, because I think she's met a couple times with Mr. Ralph, Brett Ralph, by the way, is an alumni.
He's alumni, correct.
From East Long Meadow High School, and he remembers that I was his assistant principal. I'm not sure if he remembers who the principal was at the time, but he remembers that I was his assistant principal. But he, Horace Mann has been working with us and has certainly presented some of their products to our employees, but they also work to help make certain programs happen. And so, they were able to donate $1,300 to Maple Shade to get their robotics after-school program off the ground. And so, this is not only acknowledging that, but accepting that gift.
Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
I think we do vote on.
I made a motion to accept the donation from Horace Mann to the Maple Shade Robotics Program.
Okay, motion made.
Hold second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing on those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries forward 5 to 0. It's a very nice amount.
Excellent, excellent.
Okay, so we're moving on.
No.
Not skip.
I know. We have to move on to new business, 7.1, which is our letter of resignation with intent to retire for our assistant superintendent for business, and we're not going to take it personally, but you know, we really do appreciate the work that you do. So Gordon, would you like to?
I would like to table this.
For another two or three years.
Let her think she can leave, and then we'll just jail her in at the end of the year.
In your packets, you do have a very sad letter from me, that Mrs. Ola Jars, our assistant superintendent for business, does plan on retiring at the end of the next school year, so roughly June 30th, 2015. And I think that unfortunately, it would be a hu, it would be a great moment for Mrs. Ola Jars, but it would be a huge loss to the district.
Yes, I agree.
And a huge loss to central office.
Well, gives us a year to talk her out of it.
Not sure that's going to be enough.
I know.
No, I know. Well, since our contract is with the school committee, we have to take a vote, make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'm not making it. A move that will accept Teri Ola Jars' letter of resignation not until June 30th, 2015, but gradually.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion?
Little, little.
A little hesitation there, right? All right, no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay.
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 All right, that's going to go forward, 5 to 0, so.
Thank you.
Good move on to our next.
Oh, policy, okay.
We have a policy, ADDA.
Powerpoint, yes. We do. This, this policy actually has, this deals with not only the fingerprints, but it's a merger of the original query, and background checks through the query system, policy ADDA. And this is now with one or two additions, what MAS C is recommending that school committees adopt for this policy as we move forward and make sure that these regulations are taking place and happening, the background checks are happening in our schools. The policy subcommittee did meet and discuss this in depth. The one sentence, one sentence has changed from MAS C, it's right in the beginning, it's actually the end of the very first sentence, where it says, "It shall be the policy of the school district that, as required by law, a state and national fingerprint criminal background check will be conducted to determine the suitability of full or part-time current prospective school employees who may have direct and unmonitored contact with children." That was one revision from MAS C, they just changed that sentence a little bit, and I think the key to this whole new policy is around the direct and unmonitored contact with children. So having that as the base for our discussion at the policy subcommittee, we added the final sentence of the first paragraph, where it says, "The East Long Meadow Public Schools will require all parents slash guardians and/or volunteers who will be supervising students on a field trip to complete a national fingerprint criminal background check in addition to the I query, do the I query now. School volunteers and subcontractors slash laborers who may have direct or unmonitored contact with children must continue to submit state query checks."
So, so we're making a distinction between a field trip and a school volunteer in the building?
Right, the distinction is around that volunteers generally are with the classroom teacher, and so they, if they're in the building, and so they are not ever in a situation where they have direct and unmonitored contact with their students.
So from Steve, the electrician or the plumber, Steve?
Steve's the electrician.
Electrician, if he comes into our building, does he have to be fingerprinted or just needs a query, because it says subcontractors or laborers? Does he need a query?
Well, the key would be whether he was ever going to have direct and unmonitored contact with our students.
So?
He actually has a query, I think, through the town.
Right, so he wouldn't need, he wouldn't need to be fingerprinted.
No, we, we did, we talked a long time about.
So DP Doug wouldn't need to be fingerprinted?
No, because they're not going to be necessarily alone with students. They're here to perform a certain function, a specific function.
Right, so let's get the distinction down, okay?
And, and certainly, that's why this, I think, is a, is not only a first reading, but why it's so valuable to have some discussion, because we do field trips, not only do we do the overnight trips that we've seen, where there may be direct and unmonitored contact with our students, but we also have field trips where, when we go to, whether it be the Science Museum or Plymouth Plantation, where groups may be given for full supervision to volunteers and parents. In those cases, we're saying, if that's, if you're not going to have a staff member with that group, that we're recommending that the volunteer go through fingerprinting.
Coaches need to get fingerprinted?
Yeah, that's, that's actually part of the law.
Because they're in contact.
They're employees and they're in direct contact. That's already started.
So there's really going to be no difference between field trip and overnight?
Well, the difference would be, no, the difference would be that, the key is, we'll be supervising students.
Depends on the field trip.
If, if the field trip is such where we can put a staff member and have the volunteer or parent be the second set of eyes, if you will, then they wouldn't have to go through fingerprinting.
If it's just one classroom, it may not be necessary. Whereas if you get a full grade going to, as Gordon said, Plymouth Plantation or Science Museum, where you're going to have, okay, you're responsible for these.
I know, you're a kindergarten class, right, three of them go at the same time.
Correct, and, okay, you're responsible for these 10 students. In that instance, there will be enough advance notice sent out, probably at the beginning of the year, that if you're thinking about doing this in a role for specifically unsupervised, it will give them the law. Where it would be unsupervised, you're going to be subject to this fingerprint background check.
I'm afraid it may affect field trips.
It's going to affect.
I'm just sitting here thinking about Symphony Hall, and the kids, someday I need to think about, oh, the kids go to Symphony Hall, everybody's all together, you're all in one group, but, okay, now you got, you got that little one's always got to go.
I know, I think about that all the time.
And so you can't, I'm alone, and now you got to make sure if it's parent.
I know.
That's going, so it's, it's.
It's very complicated, and unfortunately, this, we are the last state to sign on to it, so it's not like, again, Massachusetts is not. Really, the last state? The last state in the nation to sign on to it.
15 states, yeah.
So. No.
Okay.
So, so that's the, yeah, that's the one recommendation, certainly as a first reading, if there are comments, thoughts, revisions that you want us to incorporate to look at for the second reading, we would love to hear them, so that, you know, we can have that put into a revised draft and bring it back to you for the second reading. I, I agree, if we keep this statement in, it will change the way we plan field trips. It has to.
What if we rent out space within, say, the high school? And although high school members are not necessarily, we'll just go back to the driving, if you have a driving school coming, I shouldn't use it as an example, but I will. Okay, so that's happening after school hours, like later in the night, but you still might have students around. Or if we're renting out the fields, maybe it's not, it's on a Saturday or Sunday, or it's after school hours, sometimes you'll have the kids are just coming up, all the kids come, I mean, are we going to have to worry about stuff like that?
It's, it's really our programming that we have to worry about, and our employees. So if you, I think a better example might be the summer camps.
Okay.
If a summer camp is using our facility to run the summer camp, they have to go through the building use process, and most of those have pretty rigorous background checks to become a camp counselor, but they are not our employees, nor is it our program.
Even though they're on our property.
Right, just think, just think in terms of events that we sponsor. If we don't sponsor it, then we're not responsible for it, under this particular policy and law.
As we go into the fireworks thing coming up for the National Night Out, we're okaying it, though.
But it, it's not sponsored by us, we're okaying it, but it's not.
I'm just trying to.
Right, no, as we go through this, it's going to get complicated.
What about like when the PTOs have like family event nights at the schools?
Again.
It's just not, but okay.
Yeah, but generally, when you have a PTO event night, you have staff, the LPS staff who are there. So take the fun with fitness night that we have, you had not only the nursing leader there, you had the principal, the assistant principal, and you had other staff members, right? So, in those cases, you wouldn't have direct supervision or direct or unmonitored contact with students.
And obviously, CAP's going to be doing it.
Oh, yeah. They are, they.
Again, CAP is not our program, we partner with them, but.
But they're in our school, and they're with our kids, and we're, you know, I think about even the Shaker Bowl thing, I mean, they're picking our kids up from the school, I mean, we're, I just think like.
We don't, we don't actually have the authority over the Shaker Bowl to mandate that they, the real teeth, if you will, to this.
I know, but they're picking our kids up from our school in a bus to bring them to their facility, I mean, I'm just.
With a parent's permission.
I think at that point, everything's weird.
Yeah.
All right, because I don't want them to miss out on an opportunity, but then again, I don't want us to get in trouble either.
Because the parents are, anything the parents sign off on, especially for something that's not school-sponsored, we don't have any authority on, we don't have any authority over.
The, the real teeth, I guess, if you will, to this law, is that it becomes a condition of employment, so that's, that's the authority we have.
And school committee members are not subject. No, we're not. We're not.
Unless you're a.
Can't discriminate, or you can't prevent someone from being a school committee member.
You just can't go on any field trips.
Well, the, the, well, the, the reasoning was, it's not, you know, it's that we would not have any, as, as part of our role, we are not with, we are not unsupervised with students.
Right, this would be our role.
If you guys decide you want to do field trips.
As a parent, right.
As a parent, stepping aside from the school committee role, it's a whole different ballgame.
Right.
Like Beth, you administer fluoride, but you're not alone.
Alone.
So you're not subject.
Well, I'm in the hallway sometimes, alone with them.
Then it's, then discretionary.
Yeah, those are things that.
I mean, there may be other teachers walking back and forth, but you know, it's occasionally.
Then that's, then we have to look at how we're structuring that.
Doing that, yeah.
So then there should be, whether it be the nurse or a classroom teacher or administrator.
And this year, I did do it with the nurse. Last year, sometimes you have another parent, it depends on the situation, but if the nurse has to leave to go with a sick child, then you're alone, you're dancing with your cups in the middle of the hallway, causing trouble, so.
But, I mean, the definition of unmonitored, unsupervised.
Yeah.
MAS C did not provide that, so we're going to wade our way through it.
Okay.
And have to look at a, at situation by situation. But they're not, they're not advising that, right? Because if you read the MAS C policy newsletter in the number one, it says, "The superintendent, the attached policy grants to a superintendent the discretion to make the decision based upon the circumstances presented. For example, if an overnight field trip where non-staff chaperones would be presented would likely cause the superintendent to require a national background, likely require," it doesn't mandate, which is a law, mandate we require this?
No, we, those are our decisions in terms of.
So the un, the, the whole provision that we added was at our discretion? Yes.
Right.
Oh, I don't like it at all. So my thought, and I don't mean, I mean that in a nice sense, but my thought is, we are, we are subjecting any volunteer we have and we are to, to, I don't know, giving up some of their, their God-given liberty, I think, myself, and I'm, this may be extreme, and subjecting them to submit to a national database, which will track their everything, everything they ever do for the next, the rest of their life, only so that they can volunteer their time in the high school. Thus, are we saying that everyone is guilty until proven innocent?
I know.
We are, and so everyone is guilty until we check on you, then you're innocent, which I, I don't know, I think we've taken it to this extreme, it's my personal view. Yes, do I want to keep every student safe, that's our number one goal, obviously, but we're giving up our own individual liberties in the hopes of this, and I don't think we're going to prevent everything anyway, you know?
I know.
So I, if, if it's at our discretion, I'm up for discussion on that, and I don't, you know.
And where's the first reading?
Right.
I mean, I, as long as we have something in place by September, we're going to be good. So I don't think there's any, there's no sense of, if we need to go beyond, let's say, our June 23rd meeting and hold it over until August, maybe the first meeting in August, we probably could, but I think we're running into a danger if we go beyond that, because we do need something in place by September, so that everything could go out to everybody.
Right, and people have the chance to do.
People have to know.
We're meeting for a little bit next week, and we see maybe what some of like Wilperham and Long Meadow are planning on doing.
Sure.
You know, because I, I'll be honest, and I know I read the letter, but I'm thinking, you're right, you know, I'm thinking it has to be done, but if it is our discretion, we don't have to worry about the fluoride, mom, or we don't have to worry about the PTO gathering.
We just, you know, when we.
I know that, but I also, it's a safeguard that's being put in place.
It's not a safeguard, things are going to happen, but all we're asking people to do is subject themselves to a national database that they're going to say, you know what, I'm just, I've got nothing to hide, I'll say that openly, honestly, but.
I'll say that openly, honestly, but I'm not really comfortable with giving up my fingerprint so that I can be tracked for the rest of my life, because that's what this will do. This goes into a national database. And if parents understand that, maybe I'm not going to volunteer to go do the fluoride thing because...
That's what I mean, it's going to...
I'm a little lyrical about, you know, how that might be handled in the future.
Right.
And I think that's a shame that we don't allow you to go do the fluoride with the kids, because you won't subject yourself to us making sure you're innocent, guilty.
No, you're right.
The fluoride actually would be allowed.
Right.
The fluoride, I think, because we'd be able to supervise...
We're using it as...
Well, I just put it out there as an example. The biggest part of this is the field trips.
Right.
That's where... and that's what... that was the focus of our discussion. And we spent quite a bit of time defining field trips, and it's not the quick field trip to, let's say, you know, Fenway Golf, for example. It's the Boston... it's the Science Museum, it's Plymouth Plantation. That's where we saw the danger, quote-unquote, danger. That's where we felt the most need for the check was.
But when has...
I don't think...
When has anything ever happened in East Long Meadows?
Oh, no. I agree.
Any detail in the 50-year history of this building? But because there's a chance that someone out of somewhere, we're all saying, okay, here's my fingerprint, track me wherever I go, and if you don't think that in 10, 15 years, every doorknob's going to have a sensor for your fingerprint, it's certainly... so as soon as you give up your fingerprint to that national database, it's there forever.
Right.
And you're tracked forever, and I'm just not comfortable with that myself. And I have nothing to hide. And I coach soccer teams, and I go on field trips, and I go into the schools, but I'm just not comfortable with it. And I think others might share that.
No, I do tend to agree. I guess I feel the over... my big concern was overnight field trips. You're flying to Anaheim, things like that, or you're driving children in your own vehicle to a competition because we can't afford to pay for bus. I mean, maybe then those are the times where...
But if you recall...
What am I worried about happening? So if we're worried about, you know, a pedophile or something, I mean, anybody within our community, this is a pretty small community. I think we're going to know if someone has been convicted of being a pedophile, right? I mean, maybe we wouldn't know, but it's not, you know... So I don't know what we're so worried about happening. I mean, I get what we're worried about.
Oh, I don't think there's anything specific that we're worried about happening. It's just the way this evolved, the way this whole thing evolved.
It's an overreaction to everything. Like every law that comes through, or not every law, but most laws that come through, it's an overreaction to something that happened in one school district, and now we all have to give up our individual freedoms, and that's all I have to say.
How do you feel, Rich?
I am really ambivalent. I really do, I have a touch of what Greg is saying, which, I mean, yeah, it is. I mean, I thought the quarry was enough, but I was saying the quarry's not enough.
I know, I like the quarry.
Well, the quarry's not going...
Yeah, quarry's not going away.
Neither one of these are going to go away, because there are certain parts that is... that are law, that are CMRs, that are laws that we have to abide by.
Right. And, you know, I'm not even 100%... I'm in agreement with those laws, but I agree with that. If it's the law, it's the law. We're a public institution. We have to follow the law. But if we have any sort of discretion on this...
Can we continue just quarries and see how it pans out with just our staff at this point getting it done?
The staff have to.
Right. But let that year go through, and then do the quarries as we have done.
Well, it's... the part of the law is talking about unsupervised, direct contact with students.
Right.
Part of that is a law. There is discretion...
But MAS C makes discretion to the district.
There is discretion, yes. But there are certain parts...
Stop that in place.
There are certain parts that... of the unmonitored contact with students that's part of the law.
What do they mean by unsupervised? I mean, you know, when you're at the Boston Science Museum, there's a million other people there. I know other schools, too.
So if I'm doing a field trip and three people fingerprint three or not, I'm going to team them up. I mean, there are ways to do this that would not impact negatively our students' chances to participate in these wonderful field trips. I mean, I am concerned.
Yeah, I think if you keep the sentence that's proposed, it would be incumbent upon the educators to structure the field trip differently.
But why is that fair that...
Because if you were to remove that sentence...
Right. If I don't subject myself to the fingerprinting, I'm not allowed to be with students on an individual basis. I'm with my kid, my coach, I coach 15 kids at a time, and we're out playing soccer, so if I don't give my fingerprint, I'm no longer able to coach soccer.
Right.
And it's going to come to that next. As soon as we do a policy like this in the school...
It's going to wreck.
Take... you betcha. It's going to wreck. And so this is the time for us to stand and say, listen, and it says, "Quarries will continue to be required for anyone who could have direct, unmonitored contact with students." Quarries. And I'm comfortable with that. Quarries are subject... that's data. That's already data that's out there, that's relevant, that's related to my social security number. It's there. So, I don't know.
All right, this was a good conversation.
Got him way too far.
No, it was a good conversation.
Too much.
No, no, I feel like necessarily comfortable with it. Sometimes I feel laws are put in place for like suburb... like for urban schools, where you really may not know your neighbor's...
And sometimes laws are just put in place as an overreaction, so that people can say, oh, look what we did. We are keeping people safe. No, we're giving up our individual liberties, and we continue to do that. We're losing. We're losing, so...
I agree.
So looking...
Quarries will continue to be required for anyone...
If you give a little survey with...
Yeah, we need to...
I'll get information from the other LPVC districts.
Yeah, let's find out.
Are there any possible revisions to that sentence that people are interested in?
Well, just... We'll just see what you get back, and I think that may happen.
Okay.
And maybe talk to some of the, you know, the PTO presidency, how they feel, because they would have to discuss this with the parent volunteers to say... Because they're usually the ones that are forming some of these volunteer opportunities that every year...
And they could make it, you get a quarry or you get the fingerprint. You make your own choice.
Go back one sentence, and it says, "The school committee superintendent or principal, as appropriate, may obtain state... a state and national fingerprint criminal background check for any volunteer, subcontractor, or laborer commissioned by the school committee, school, or employee by the city, town, or blah blah." But the key word there is "may," so...
Yeah, but whose discretion is it to may require?
Superintendent.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
Because we're the policy developing body.